Do we have Rob?
Yes, I'm here.
Awesome. Mr. Swilly's here, one, two. And we don't know if Mr. Widener is getting on or not, and Mr. Farr is not, so.
Holly, Mr. Widener is not coming.
Okay. All right, well then I guess we will call this meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please let the minutes show that we have some executive sessions to report. People may or may not have realized that the last meeting was the first time I had ever led a meeting, and I had only announced one of the two executive sessions we held. So at the beginning of the meeting, I announced the one that we had held on 9/16, but had forgotten to announce the one we held immediately prior to that meeting on 9/23. So we had a meeting for legal purposes on 9/23, immediately preceding the board meeting, and then we had another executive session for legal purposes before this meeting on October 7th, and we will be recessing into an executive session after this meeting for personnel purposes. So.
Holly, you said October 7th, but we know you meant today, October 6th.
Okay, yeah, that works, October 6th. All right, um, so yes, there were two on October 6th. That or I'm a time traveler, you know, one of those things. Um, one other point of order before we go to public comment is that I'd like to ask if there's any members of the board who have any opposition to extending each comment period to four minutes per speaker during both comment periods.
No.
No. Okay, so, all right, so that will mean that instead of having a two-minute limit, there will be a four-minute limit on both the time period that an individual can speak on the public agenda items, and then again, the non-agenda items. There was one other thing, oh, so, and the third matter is that if you feel that there's a sunshine violation and you would like to object to anything that we are saying or doing, you may, we have our solicitor on this call tonight, and if you have an objection, even though you are muted, you can enter your objection into the chat box, it will be recorded, and if there is a matter that the solicitor believes we need to stall the meeting or stop the meeting to address, he will let us know that. So, Mr. Khan is unmuted, right? He has the ability to interject. Trying to make sure of that before we move on.
There we go, all right, I am now in, and yes, and just to, just to be clear, Ms. Arnold, an objection would be limited only to an objection about a specific sunshine act violation, not an objection to any other content of the meeting, just a specific sunshine act objection.
And anything entered into the chat will be considered acknowledged unless there is a valid objection, in which case Attorney Khan will interject.
Yes.
Okay, um, with that, is there anyone on our list, Mrs. Egan, for public comments on agenda items?
We have two people that would like to speak, excuse me, three people, and Mr. Yuhas would like to object if we don't get to speak per topic, not just once.
He would need to enter that objection in the column to everyone so that Attorney Khan can see that when he has an objection in the chat window. Because we're not going to interrupt the meeting with every objection unless legal counsel believes that it's something that needs to be addressed.
Mr. Yuhas, put another objection in the chat box.
He is, or he has, or you're asking him to. Because I don't see it in the chat box and to everyone.
It is in the chat box, yes. The people that want to speak, he also does want to speak during public comments.
Okay. Mr. Burke, I do see your test in the chat box to everyone. So anybody who wants to object needs to do so and make sure it is addressed to everyone, not just the Toncanic Area School District, because that is the only way the attorney will see it, and that is the proper instructed way to log objections.
Mrs. Arnold, the chat was only enabled to the host and co-hosts. I have now just enabled it so everyone can see the chat box.
If that becomes abused, then we can just make Mr. Khan or Attorney Khan a co-host so that he will be able to see what is entered in the chat. Okay, well, I guess we're ready for public comment on agenda items only.
Mr. Yuhas, I'm going to unmute you.
I appreciate being unmuted, but I need to know where the agenda is, I can't find the agenda anywhere.
Go to tasd.net under School Board and under Agendas.
So I'm there now, but I don't, still don't see it, I'm going to need a little more direction. Is it in the beginning, I opened up the Toncanic Area School District, right now I'm looking at it, where's the agenda?
Did you click on School Board?
What's, what's on the agenda?
There are approval of minutes from September 9th. Under New Business, there are three items, recommend a resolution be adopted accepting superintendent's retirement, a discussion of the legal budget, and a discussion of right-to-know duties.
So on the discussion of the right-to-know duties, does that include sunshine act?
No.
There's still. Are you guys having an additional, are you guys having additional time at the end of this to discuss things that are not on the agenda?
Just as we have every other meeting, yes.
Okay. So my objection, I don't know, is it on your agenda to talk about how to deal with objections? I heard you talk about it, but is it on the agenda?
No.
Okay, so it probably should have been on the agenda, that's fine, but I need to be able to talk about that. I think it certainly should have been on the agenda because this Zoom-type meeting is obviously, obviously causing trouble, I still can't find the agenda, I'm trying to do three things on this device. So my objection wasn't answered, so what do you do? Because I can tell you now that if I don't get my legal objection answered, it's not at your leisure or at the leisure of the board, I need my legal objection answered that we're supposed to be able to talk per topic, not just one time, so it's not, he sees if it fits, but everybody should, should be able to object where it fits. So it's, so are we going to be able to object as we go and we stop and we discuss it? Because this idea somehow that we get a precursor and then shut down, it's, that's not going to work, that's not how an open meeting works.
I will advise the board on how an open meeting works, thank you, Mr. Yuhas. And the instruction was that if there is an objection limited to the sunshine act, it can be placed in the chat. If it needs to be addressed, I will address it. If it is not addressed, you can assume the objection is overruled, and that I've determined the meeting is still in compliance with the sunshine act.
So as my board members, I do believe that you should, will my board members be seeing the objections too? Because we won't, we won't be having legal on our school board meetings, we'll have the school board members running it, thank you. So guys, school board members, if you feel that there, that you need to take time on my objection, I would actually recommend that you at least break bread and talk about it, even if you're counsel who's been wrong in the past, because the last, the very last meeting, your counsel didn't advise you on the last meeting that you need to open up to objections, which qualified you for violating my sunshine right last time that I tried to object at last meeting. So we all can't know everything all the time, so if you suspect that my objection is better than him just saying no, you can open your mic to me and talk to me about it. Because if you don't start learning how to talk to the citizenry, we're not going to get through this together at all, and legal cannot constantly scare and control my board.
I can only speak for myself, but I feel neither scared nor controlled, but I appreciate your concern. As to finding the agenda, Bob shared a link to that right in the chat that you should be able to click on, and it will automatically take you to the PDF.
Okay, I wish that this objection portion was in the agenda, so it could, I got talked about a little bit more by everybody, but thank you for my two minutes or more that you gave me.
Thank you.
I'm finished right now, thank you.
Barbara Kowski, I'm going to unmute you. You should be able to.
Hello, I'm here.
Hello.
Hello, I'm, I'm just, I'm reading a letter that I'm I'm representing Citizens Advisory Committee. They're going to be sending you a letter via email addressing some issues. The letter is to provide a clear picture of the collaborative concerns expressed during past school board meetings, which we feel have not been properly addressed or resolved. Please carefully, please carefully read the email when you get it, and as, I will read the letter to you right now. Grievances, one, not following the state masking mandate by ignoring the causation portion of Section 3B and ignoring entirely subsection five of this section four in the masking mandate. Willful misconduct, willing, willfully and flagrantly exercising authority or power not authorized by law by adding the 504 requirements to the state masking mandate. Sunshine law violation, creating new business not on the agenda and taking a new official action without public deliberation on that new official action. Not following the lawful interpretation of the 1955 Disease Prevention and Control Act. Official oppression under Title 185301, violating personal rights by denying and impeding other and impeding another in the exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege. Willful deprivation of federally protected rights under the color of the law, Section 242 of Title 18, by not accepting religious exemptions or interfering with other persons' rights of conscience. Child abuse, as per Toncanic Area School District Board policies, the definition which describes forms of child abuse restricting the breathing of a child. We have all come through the same difficult time recently and recognize it has not been easy to navigate the troubled waters. For years, the people and parents of the Toncanic Area School District have trusted you to collaborate in a joint effort to educate our children. Unfortunately, the Toncanic Area School District Board and Superintendent have too often, for whatever reason, taken a first-year adversarial, I'm sorry, role in addressing the illegitimate concerns expressed by the citizenry of the board meetings, at the board meetings. Recognizing the challenges yet to come, many in the community believe that the superintendent and the board have lost sight of what is in the best interest of our children and have lost the ability to lead in the current political environment. It should be known that at any time, the superintendent and/or any member of the board could have stepped up and stopped the abuses of the children.
You have 57 seconds left.
That have transpired, but yet have done, have not done. In a final attempt to come to a peaceful resolution between the Toncanic Area School District and the community, we, the citizenry, are requesting that the superintendent and all the board members resign. You have, your failure to adequately and cost-effectively address the concerns of the parents' taxpayers and other members of the community has damaged the reputation and trust we have given this governing body. Therefore, there is no movement to step aside, papers of abolishment will be filed, and we will actively rally the electorate to move, remove you. This action has been taken to ensure that no more informed governing body is forged concerning the rights, obligations, duties, and under the Constitution of the United States. Thank you for your time, this is from the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Please don't mute her yet, because I had a couple of follow-up questions. Barbara, what was your last name? Barbara?
Mrs. Kowski, you should be able to unmute yourself.
It just says Barbara's iPhone on the screen, so I don't have your.
Right, it's Barbara Rutkowski, R-U-T-K-O-W-S-K-I.
And Mrs. Kowski, are you a resident of Toncanic Area School District?
Yes, I am, Toncanic Township.
Okay, and I just wanted to clarify, are you publicly accusing the board of child abuse?
Well, no, I'm just stating, I was just simply to read the letter, there's a lot of details in that that, that have to be further investigated, it's just a letter of presentation stating issues that are of concern.
Did, did you compose the letter?
I did not.
Do you know who did?
George Yuhas.
George Yuhas, okay, thank you.
No.
I don't have any other questions.
It's a group of people, there's a, there's about six people. Actually, my husband is part of the sixth group, and he was, had to work today. So they just asked me to read it, the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay, for the record, I believe it would be beneficial if you're going to send that as an official document to the school board, that the, who the actual members of that committee membership would be, would be information that would be pertinent towards us taking action. But I can assure you, as I sit here, that I won't be resigning, so. Thank you for your time.
So let me get this straight, this is six people out of roughly 15,000 people? So there's like 14,994 people that didn't compose the letter?
If Jen would like to talk, she, she can actually have another time. She can get four minutes. Okay. I don't have any follow-up questions.
There's no other requests?
Okay. All right, so moving along to the approval of minutes, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9th Public Work Session Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any objections? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. All right, under New Business, the board received a letter from Mrs. McPherson, regrettably, informing us that she would be pursuing an option to retire. I will read the letter since it is not in the agenda verbatim. It's dated for today. To the Toncanic Area School Board Directors, dear board members, after serious consideration, I am informing you of my intent to retire during this school year. By mutual agreement, my last day in the office will be January 14th, 2022. All responsibilities will be transferred to an interim superintendent as of that date. After that date, I will utilize accumulated vacation. I have been planning to make this announcement for several months, but wanted to get the year, the school year underway and reach some plateau of stability before making the move. My time at Toncanic has been extraordinary, filled with new challenges and a number of accomplishments that we should all be proud of. I thank you for the opportunity to serve this community and its children. It has been an honor. Sincerely, Heather McPherson, TASD Superintendent. So can I get a, I don't know, Heather, would you like to speak first, or do we want the motion first?
Under the circumstances, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Well, how about we get a motion in a second, and then.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hey, so how about some of this question, I believe Mrs. McPherson had some.
No, I, I, I just, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things with the community. I spoke to the faculty on Friday, I actually told the board in executive session almost two weeks ago. So we have had a very joyful addition to our family, a second grandchild. And I, I really didn't, I didn't want to do this earlier because I really wanted to get school open. I, I have an exceptional administrative team, I have exceptional teachers and staff here, and I I, I felt the need to get school open and get into a little bit more of a stable place, I feel like we are there now. And so it's time to start planning for this. But this has been in the works for a while, I've met with piecers, I've already done the, you know, meeting with our financial folks, and so I, I I look at this as sort of pivoting into my family, I had a very nice note last night from a student, and I know she can understand when I say it's time to pivot into my family. And she is a very fine young lady, and I know she'll understand that, so. But it has been an honor, we have accomplished together as a team of educators and of board members a number of great things, and I want us to remember that and to focus on that. And I've been here for five and a half years, I've really enjoyed my time at Toncanic, this board has been excellent to work with. My admin team is second to none, and so I, I actually, I went back through. And I, I think it's easy to forget, especially with what we're going through right now, a lot of the stuff that we've done in the last five or six years, so I just want to, I met with my admin team, and we kind of like highlighted some things, and I think they're worth remembering. Consolidation of schools, which, who would have thought that would look easy compared to the last year, but it was relatively easy. And then we opened, we renovated downstairs, and we opened the seventh grade STEM Academy. Together, we defeated a charter school that wanted to come into our area, that is no small feat. And we stuck together and we did it. We've got the fund balance stabilized, and I think that I'm, I'm real happy about that, that was one of the priorities you guys had set when you, when you hired us. And this team has done that. We installed bus radios in every bus, and that's been huge as far as safety, we've increased our security staff. We sold those buildings. We got a bond, so we can look forward to improvements in the facilities and, and the campus for the years to come. We have started the seventh grade STEM Academy. We have created Fusion C3, which, that was a huge effort by the faculty and the administration. We've added a drone technology class to the high school and licensing, and we've also added early childhood education pathway to the high school CTC classes. We've instituted a yearly and routine air quality and water quality testing program. We got Safe to Say up and off the ground. Our tech department has been magnificent, and we now have one-to-one in this district, and we'd never had that before, nor did I think we would have it, you know, by now. We've updated our curriculum in science, fifth through eighth grade, K to eight in math, and ELA seven through 12. We've added two additional social workers for the social and emotional well-being of our kids. Thanks to Dr. Prabola, Rob Perry, and a bunch of other fine volunteers, we now have the Tiger Fund for Excellence. And that is something that we can all be proud of. And I can say with confidence, we have made major improvements on every aspect of our operations of this district, meaning transportation, building and grounds, maintenance, cafeteria. So I feel really good about that, and I think it's easy to forget all the good things that have happened. I don't take credit for any of those things, oh, and we added AC at the intermediate center. I don't take credit for any of those things, that was a team, and this board is part of that team. So it's an awful lot of, of things that have gotten done, and it's a lot of positive, and that's how I want to end my tenure, right? I want us to be focusing on the positive. I want us to be focusing on the team and, and what this team is capable of, and that's all. I, I have, it's been an honor to work for you, and I will give you 100% until my last day here, and so, that's all.
Then she's changing her number.
No.
Kidding.
January 14th, that's what we agreed to. And then I'm gonna, and then, folks, I'm gonna go rock a baby in Vermont, that's my plan. Yep.
So I'll go first, Heather, I, I just want to thank you for your contributions, I know that we're not done here. You know, when you came in, I've been focused a lot on the cost side of the business, and so we are in a much better place now than we were five and a half years ago. Lori and I are involved in some of that stuff with some of those early committees, and, you know, the, we thought we were going down here, and so the consolidation was a very tough thing to go through, thank you for all you're doing. You know, I, I don't live far from the schools, so I know when Heather's working, when she's not working, because I'm in and around the community, and she is one of the hardest workers I've seen. So she is working hard for this district, and I just wanted to say thanks for all you're doing, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for hiring me six years ago.
So I, I, oh, go ahead, Rob first.
My turn, so Heather, I've been here since 1997. And a lot of superintendents, and you were absolutely the best. My favorite memory, though, is when the Factoryville Sportsman Club had the sporting place shoot for the scholarships they have for both Trail and Toncanic. And you were part of our team, and we beat Trail. That was pretty cool, wasn't it? So, we have a lot of good matters, and we did a lot of good things here, and you did a lot of good for this district.
Thank you, Rob, thank you.
Um, the news really hit the public yesterday because Bob at the newspaper, he had put in the agenda and, and made that announcement, and hundreds of comments, and overwhelmingly, they are supportive of everything that Heather has done here, and I absolutely echo that. I have a lot of respect for Heather and everything that she's done, she just listed off a laundry list of things that this school district prior wouldn't have done in 20 years, much less five and a half. And the most touching thing, though, is the fact that there are so many of our students and parents and administrators and teachers and staff who have had some kind of little one-off experience with Heather that doesn't make the big list. And it's like the letter that the gentleman wrote about Mary and Heather going to the special needs baseball games, or the girl on Facebook. Or the girl on Facebook that talked about how Heather helped her and her fiance so much navigating being teen parents at the school and still making their priority in education and, and childcare and all those types of things, things that take up minutes or hours or days in your year that mean an awful lot to just one or two people. And except that there's hundreds of them, if not more. So I, I'm really going to miss the fact that you're not going to be here with us because we did have an understanding that, you know, we were leaving at the same time. But we knew when we hired you that you were not making a twenty-year commitment here. And we are grateful that we've gotten the time with you that we have. So just what everybody else said, regrettably, we will vote on this letter.
Thanks, Holly. Thank you.
I also have something to say. As we're sitting here and everybody is saying what they need to say, my cell phone's blowing up. Do not accept Heather's retirement. I remember the day that we took you on your tour. I was part of that team as we drug you through the red tile. And the welders are going off and everything else is happening. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I think not only as a superintendent, but you brought the board to be a working board. We now have become a working board. We agree to disagree, but we work together, which was absent when I first became a board member. I wish you good luck with the grandbabies. I know what that's like. And we hope you will come back and see our future improvements that we are going to attempt to make.
I will, Lori. I'm just right down the road. You'll see me around.
And Heather, I'll just chime in a little bit. You know I'm upset you're leaving. You and I kind of came in at the same time, and I was actually on the committee that was involved in hiring you. I will say that we got a peach of a superintendent. I'm jealous because I understand why you're leaving, and I think that's fantastic, and I wish you all the best. So thank you for your years of service.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, so now it's my turn to tell you congratulations. I have never known this board without you. And I also thought we, I would at least have you for one child on the graduation podium. But congratulations. I am very proud of you for doing what you need to do and wish you all the best.
Thanks, Shayna. Thanks, Shayna.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call?
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
He's muted.
Hello, I had to figure it out, but yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, so moving on to new business. Oh, nope, we're already in new business.
Mrs. Arnold, Mrs. Arnold, we have an objection in the chat box. Mr. Uhas was only direct messaging to me instead of everyone. So he has an objection to this meeting. Let me read it. He objects to the meeting. What was the official action taken to move to Zoom? I expect my object as a citizen to have this object addressed tonight. This is a legitimate legal object and must be addressed under the Sunshine Law. What official action was taken to move our in-person meetings to Zoom?
Attorney Khan.
Tonight's meeting was properly called, properly advertised, and you are in compliance with the Sunshine Act.
Okay, objection noted. Moving along. Discussion of our legal budget. So I'll turn that one over to our treasurer, Mr. Burke.
So I just want a little bit of a discussion around where we are with legal expenses for the year. And this plays into the next agenda item as well. So our projected budgeted legal fees for the year is about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. This is a pretty important year also because we're going to start negotiations after first of the year. So there's a potential legal fees under normal circumstances would be relatively significant. And so I wanted to address, there's currently fifteen right-to-know requests that are outstanding. And so the bills for the first four have come in. Those are about ten thousand dollars, and so that makes up those first four. So if you extrapolate that to the remaining eleven right-to-knows, you're probably somewhere in this thirty thousand dollar range. But that doesn't take into account, depending on the size and scope of those right-to-know requests. There's a potential that if they were all followed through and granted, that that legal budget would be exhausted. So there is a potential that that could go well over the hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for the right-to-know requests. And so that doesn't include any of the ongoing business we have, nor the negotiations. So I just wanted to bring that up for discussion amongst the board members because there is a potential here from an overrun, from a cost perspective, that as we get into next year's budgeting conversation, we might need to cut something else out of our budget, knowing we don't, we aren't a board who likes to raise taxes. And so if the legal fees are overrunning in a significant way, that will need to be addressed for the remainder of this year and going into next year.
Well, you're gonna have to cut it out of the sprinklers. There's nowhere else to get it from. And the biggest factor crucial is our football in the band. That's where the money's coming from. I mean, it's sad to say, but that it is what it is.
Yeah, we're going to look at where that money comes from, depending on where we roll in from a legal cost perspective.
I also, I mean, we're, we're talking about obviously something serious. Obviously, our solicitor is here tonight because we do, as a board and district, take this stuff very seriously. From a community perspective, obviously, I think it's important for this board to continue to communicate that we are following the law, we're doing what we have to do, and there's an added expense. And I believe just in the one night right-to-know request, and Heather or Mr. Khan helped me out, I believe there's, the search has been a hundred and seventy thousand emails. So, so that being said, there's a process that we can't just turn that over because there may be private names or private issues for other people in the community that a lawyer has to go through and redact anything that's not appropriate. And that, my friends, is a monumental cost. I know we're talking about the budget of a hundred and forty-five thousand. But in my math, even if an attorney looks at these, and David, you can help me out here, sixty of these emails every hour, sixty into a hundred and seventy thousand, based on an hourly legal fee, we're talking upwards of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's for one right-to-know request. But we have to follow the law, and, and that's what the important thing is. And, and the issue of this discussion is that we have to let the community know that we take it seriously. We have our solicitor here, and in the future, this is where we're going. And I, I believe that there is a discussion, and I'll be honest with you. I, I, I want to engage the community because the time, the energy, the expense, we're taking it away from the kids. This board has never taken away an educational program. We didn't cut art or sports. We've added things. So, so in my opinion, even though there's legal issues, we're, we're trying to listen. But just because we don't agree doesn't make us bad people or sinister people. But we also have to say, there's an expense to this. And the reality is, we want to move this district forward. We heard tonight, we got a resignation from a person who's been fantastic. That's going to take a lot more energy from this board and the administration, you know, to, to go down and hire the right person. So the future of this district, even though I believe we have good leadership, we have good legal counsel. I'm not a lawyer. I listen to what Mr. Khan tells me. He knows the law. I don't. So, so I'm just saying that I think the community has to know that this board is acting in a transparent manner. And, and we want to, we want to keep the district moving forward. And then there's a lot of time and energy, and more importantly, resources, finance resources that can go into this. So I, I, I think that, that, I'm trying to make a transparent statement, at least from my end. And I believe it's from my, my colleagues on the board.
I'll make a more poignant statement. There's like ten people that are destroying this school district in a lot of ways. That's all I'm gonna say. I've been here for twenty-three years. I can't have a feel for what's going on.
Yeah, so from a cost perspective, we just need to be aware that this is out there. And so we, we want to be able to work with everyone. We want to be able to give information to, to everyone. But it just needs to, you know, as we think about budgeting and what we're doing going forward, you know, if, if we get legal expenses that are in, like Bill said, a, a single right-to-know, if it ends up being two hundred thousand dollars or more, there's, there's unfortunately going to have to be some cuts to other programs and other things if we're, if we're in that spot. So we want to work together. We want to be able to provide that stuff. You know, I personally have tried to work with those in the community who have approached me, want to talk about issues, you know, and so we'll continue to do that as, as best we possibly can. But I'm going to work, it, it's my time on the board to try to maximize education for our kids and try to put together all these different stakeholders in the best we can. And I'm going to continue to work hard for that.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna be more pointed. We're gonna get rid of the band and the football team so we can chase ghosts on crazy conspiracy theories. The people have to stand up. We're only dealing with a couple of people. I mean, the citizens of Wyoming County. It's nuts.
So there's also, I want to clarify because it's been out there on social media. We, we heard the letter read tonight, that letter, a version thereof had been sent to the board. So when we're talking about legal budgeting, there is our typical annual budget for legal stuff that we estimate of what it's going to come in. But no matter how like ridiculous or unfounded a claim might be, there will be a cost to defending those things too that are not, not just with the right-to-know information. So that's something to keep in mind, something that we'll have to watch for as far as if we start needing to move money or budget line items, or I'm never going to pretend to be the money person on this board. So I'll always defer to Mr. Farr, Mr. Burke, and, you know, pretty much everybody else on that matter to know what we need to do.
Just from perspective, right, the, the, the cost that we're talking to is two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, that's the equivalent of one collective mill. So, you know, we talk about, you know, we, we did our best to hold the line on taxes for several years. And so the amount of tax increases that we've had over the previous five years has averaged in, in a, been a pretty low spot when you compare that to neighboring districts. But legal fees, you know, that are going to be two hundred and fifty thousand and north will, will require a tax increase to cover that, or we'll be cutting programs. So, you know, we don't have a choice. We have to make the, make the budget balance over time. So if expenses go up, we have to either cut programs or we have to raise taxes.
Actually, John, we might have to do both.
Right. Yep.
Nobody wants to. Nobody wants to cut a program in this district. Absolutely not. And, and I just want to kind of dovetail on, on something else. The great thing about being at Toncanic School District in Wyoming County is it is our community. We're, we're not in a big city. We're not in a big urban area. All the people that are on this meeting tonight, all the teachers, I, I mean, we've all had tasty cakes and potato pancakes over the, over at the fair and carnival. I, I, you know, we have to do what's right for our kids. And that's what this board and this administration is trying to do. So, you know, it's, it's frustrating. This, these are frustrating times. Covid has everybody really discombobulated. This is not a personal thing with anybody on, on, on both ends. But the reality is, is we have to steer this ship and provide the best education we can, looking what the law is, looking what the mandates are. Last year, this, these school board meetings, people were begging us to forget what the governor said. Have the kids come into school with masks, with gloves. We just want them in-person learning. Guys, I think we have in-person learning, but we're following the rules the best we can. Is it the best situation? No. Can we have respectful disagreement? Absolutely. So the reality is, is, you know, we should be working together as a community because we've got tougher problems to solve as we move forward. And, and part of it is, this board, we're elected by the people in the community, and we're representing the best interest. We get emails from both sides of the spectrum. Just because we don't vote, because one way says we have to, we can't disregard what other people say or whether other people have input. So we make, and every one of my colleagues, all volunteer people on this school board, all nine of us, we make the best decision we can with the rules that are in place. And our number one, and I know this in my heart, our number one reason is to give the best education to all of our kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews, everybody in this community. So we're sharing as best we can what we're moving forward, and we want to work together with the community in a respectful manner.
Hey, we're a pretty qualified group of people. We're doing our best, just what Dr. Prabola said. From being drug around by a bunch of, I'm gonna say a bunch of whack jobs. And it's only like five to ten people versus the fifteen thousand people that represent us. We just have to stand up and do the right thing? That's all it is.
All right, I'd like to take a pause. Anyone who's not familiar with how to respond to everyone in the chat, if you look in the chat box where you type out the words that you want to use to object to something that's being said, directly above that box where it says type message here with a blinking cursor, it has the word two with a colon, and then it might say Toncanic Area School District. It might say, but it's a dropdown box with a little down pointy arrow. And if you click on that down pointy arrow, it will give you the option of all kinds of individuals that are present in this meeting. But it also gives you the option of everyone in meeting. And if you want to have an objection, it needs to be done in public. This is not an exceedingly difficult step to everyone in meeting. So I, I was never a teacher. I don't know if we need to have a practice run. If people want to try and do that and then send a message showing that they can do it. But this is, this is very basic interneting. Okay. So do we see any need at this time for any official board action as far as creating a line item, moving money, anything like that? Or are we content with just the fact that we have discussed what our current legal situation is?
I think the, the process is we got to see how the, the costs are trending. And so, you know, we're only a couple of months into this, into this current fiscal year. So I think we let it go for a couple more months, see where the bills are trending. And then we have to put some countermeasures in place if they're going well over the hundred and forty-five thousand, Holly. That would be my suggestion. So I think we revisit this in, let's say, in the November, December board meeting and see where we are.
Okay.
Understood. We, we are tracking.
All right. Next item, discussion of right-to-know duties. So for a quick refresher, and Attorney Khan can let me know if I'm off on something here. Every district is part of the right-to-know policy, has to have a right-to-know officer. And traditionally for Toncanic, that has been the superintendent. As of recent action, we have fifteen outstanding right-to-know actions going on at this moment, with more coming pretty regularly. And at this point, it is a matter of, is this a valuable use of our superintendent's time and salary rate? Or should we be discussing some other solution, whether it be a contractor or somebody else to manage as the right-to-know?
I, I'll echo, I think this ties into what John just said. I, I, I think we, we stay the course right now. I think our solicitor, Sweet Stevens, has been involved in reviewing everything, to my knowledge, Heather. And Mr. Khan, so I, I don't think, looking at adding personnel or a contractor at this point. That being said, I think we can revisit this, as Mr. Burke said, you know, as we move in the next couple of weeks to month. I think this can be something we can watch closely.
I, I will say too, you know, we're, we're going to be transitioning leadership. And so, um, we're going to need a plan before Heather goes. Because we, we can't, if we're running with an interim superintendent or we're running with a gap for a period of time, um, we're going to need to talk about staffing. So again, like, like Holly said, um, you know, that'll either be a contracted position or, um, you know, we'll have to contract that maybe directly through our solicitor's office to do more of those responsibilities. I just don't, I, that, we need to make sure we have a plan for where that work falls when Heather isn't here. Um, I'm not comfortable just letting it fall to the current administration when she's gone because then something else gets dropped along the way. You know, that's, that's not a, you know, a 15, managing 15 right to know requests is not part of what the normal job responsibilities are. So, you know, I, I, that's something that I really want to keep a close eye on for the, you know, November, December timeframe, you know, to be ready for her transition.
Agreed. Um, Heather, not to add like one more thing to your plate, but if you have an easy ability to like on a notepad or something, start tracking the amount of time you are spending, you know, whether it's like an hour here, two hours there, whatever. So we can get a grasp for what the actual workload has turned into. Um, obviously like being exact and super precise is not a big deal. We just need to know.
Yeah. I can do that.
What we're working with.
I can do that.
Okay. We will revisit that next week, um, at the regularly scheduled board meeting. So let's add that to the agenda. A touch back on that. Okay. Anything else on the right to know duties?
Can I just jump in very quickly? I just want to echo something Dr. Pabola said, just so the public is aware. It's, it's not an option for the district to simply get a right to know request and say, okay, here it is. Here's everything you've asked for. We can't do that as responsible caretakers. And the most, um, I, I think the most obvious example is if you're talking about 170,000 emails, I guarantee you among those emails will be very specific information about students with those students' names in them. And we can't simply disclose that kind of information to the public. This board has not given any instructions to try and figure out ways to withhold information from the public, ever. But this board also has to make sure that confidential information about staff and students is, is maintained confidential. And so it's not possible to just get these right to know requests and say, okay, here it is. We'll do the search and take it all. We have to go through the process of vetting and redacting all those. If there were, if there were a better way to do it, if we can find a better way to do it, you'll be the first to know. But right now that's what you're stuck with.
There's also the fact of that with the right to know process that you have to, you know, anybody can request anything does not make you entitled to have it. So in doing so, there are situations where there's a request and the district will say, no, you're not entitled to have that information. For example, all of the medical information for all the, the staff and teachers in Toncanic School District. That is not public information. So in that request, it gets denied as an example. Then there's a whole procedure if the person who is requesting that information decides to appeal it to the open of our, our Office of Open Records. So that's just still another whole procedure, even though it should be pretty cut and dry. You know? Everything has a price tag right now. So. All right. Uh, if everybody is good on those subjects, we can open it up to additional public comments, limited to four minutes.
When is our next board meeting?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Okay. Okay. That's what I thought.
And at this time, it is expected that it will be on Zoom.
Let me make a correction to that. The meeting is on Wednesday.
For October, we moved the meetings to Wednesdays. Because it often clashed with the Trunkert Street, which is a school board favorite, at least for the ones on the board who are fun. And, um, there's also parent teacher conferences has, has off, has in the past conflicted with, uh, board meetings. So for the month of October, board meetings are on Wednesday nights, regularly scheduled. Okay. So same rules as earlier, four minutes. Respectful. They can be passionate, they can be full of vigor, but if anybody starts attacking or being inappropriate, with a pretty broad brush there, we will, oh, also, sorry, the bonfire is on a Thursday as well. So that's a nice tradition that's coming back this year. Thank you, Kara. If it crosses over into that area, um, I, I'll simply ask that, the meeting administrator there, uh, mute the, the microphone. So who do we have? Please state your name.
Cherry.
And there you go. Sorry.
Jerry Jordan. You're unmuted.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I would like to say, Dr. Pabola, I feel like you read what I had written out to originally say. I would just like to say as one citizen, taxpayer, parent in Wyoming County, I no way, shape or form have given anybody the right to speak for me. I will speak for myself if I have an issue. Secondly, I feel that that has been given so much time that it takes away from what Heather, the administrators in the school board are truly trying to do. And that very much hurts my heart for our children, for our taxpayers who ultimately are going to end up paying for it all. They are the ones who are going to be hurt. The senior citizens are going to end up losing everything they've worked all their life for. And our children are going to lose all of their programs for ridiculous rude tactics. And I would just like to know, is there a way to make it all stop? There is, there is a website I suggest. Anybody who wants to learn about right to know sunshine act, especially sunshine act, they can go to openrecordspa.gov and they can look up anything and everything that you guys are allowed to do along with others in our community, in our Commonwealth. And from everything I have read, you guys follow it to the T, sometimes going way overboard to make sure everybody is kept abreast of what's going on. So I commend you for that. As far as people objecting with sunshine right violations and rights to know act, I appreciate that you don't hand out my child or my neighbor's medical information. That is very important to me. If I want somebody to know our information, I'll share it with them. They should not have the right. And if they feel they have the right, they probably should learn HIPAA violations because that would be a true HIPAA violation. So instead of wasting all of my time on things that I feel should not be happening, I would just like to say that it's very important to let the school board, the administration, and especially Heather know that although I'm not surprised you decided to retire now that I know there's a grandbaby involved, I'm expecting one in January. I appreciate that. I am very saddened though. I believe that you are a very caring professional who deserves much more respect than you have been shown by parents and some of your fellow educators. Over the past year and a half, I have seen Heather personally make decisions that I know for a fact are in the best interest of her students, her faculty and the community who she may not even know. She puts in countless hours trying to keep everybody safe. And there seems to be not enough appreciation given to her and the board and the administration for that. Meanwhile, she's still trying to do her job and all of the ridiculous right to know acts that are being passed. Over the past month, I have been contacted by many TASD parents and taxpayers who don't even have children but live in our community, asking what we can do to help alleviate things that are not TASD or taxpayer friendly. I'm very surprised actually at all the private messages. I'm very saddened that most people want to speak up to let the school board and administrators know they support them, but they feel it would be interrupted if they tried. I am in no way claiming to be the voice of our citizens, parents or taxpayers, just myself.
You have 30 seconds.
I felt it necessary to let you know that there are many people who appreciate the position you are all in and thankful for the job you do. Heather, I wish you all the best. I truly believe we will not be able to fill the void that you are going to leave. And I would also like to say, after my son being in a charter school for three years, it was because of Heather and Todd Bosher that I chose to put him back.
Somebody sent you a message on the telephone.
That was Mr. Swilly's phone, I think.
Yes, it was. So I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Jerry, thank you so much for your kind words. Ms. Arnold, can I jump in just to answer the one question that she asked, which was, is there anything that can be done to stop this? And, and I will make clear that right now I am speaking not as a board member. I'm not a board member. I'm just speaking as your solicitor. There is a bill right now that would allow public agencies to, uh, take some steps around what are called serial requesters for right to know. So if anyone who is interested in actually giving your school district a little, a little bit of a defense against some of this stuff, please call your state senator and your state representative and let them know that you support that reform to the right to know law.
That's great information.
Thanks, Jerry. And thanks, David.
Mr. Yuhas, you're unmuted.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. So, um, I'd like to know right away before we set my two minutes. My name was brought up in the very beginning, so I like to have some time to address that. And then I would like my own time for my own comments.
Your clock's going, George. Let's hear it.
You know, I need to know if I have two, if I have two times because.
George, George, you're wasting time. You have four minutes. She's already extended the time. So that's two and two, if you want to think of it that way. Go ahead.
Yep. You guys already, you mentioned my name in the beginning, so I'm going to try to throw my name out there. I was interviewed by a publisher and by the, the authors of that, uh, letter for almost three hours the other day because they didn't have as much content as they wanted. That content has to be addressed. It's being addressed now. It's all being referred. So you guys will get a chance to deal with that because it's being referred. The shaming campaign, uh, won't stop me. Uh, an example would be there was a board meeting where I was expressing, uh, there was a culture problem. There's a transparency problem. I asked for one name that I was due. I was told no at the public meeting. And at the same time, I had that same name 15 minutes later, but the suspicion was riz. It came to arise, so I had to follow up because now there's suspicion. I've asked for information about critical race theory. Was it being snuck in, uh, under the radar? I was told no. I did a FOIA request for that and it's 1500. That's not no, that's, there's stuff coming across our desk. Yes. So, uh, asking for books, to be able to review books, every book in the district goes home every single night. And to put up a legal battle not to be able to review books seems a little ridiculous, that little adversarial. Holly, you, uh, you asked everybody here to be kind and all this other stuff. You're adversarial and you're teasing, uh, prior to me not being able to get to my down drop arrow because I gotta do Zoom. My objection still, I have an open objection that hasn't been answered. I expect it to be answered here tonight, or that will be a sunshine violation in case anybody doesn't know. So there, your solicitor who let you air last Zoom meeting, he has to address my objection tonight and I expect it to be addressed because you are all walking into these pitfalls, not me. I'm only highlighting it. I've done nothing here except highlight things. I'm not causing your errors. I'm highlighting them. So I want my objections aired. I have an objection to why you guys moved to Zoom. What official action did you take to move to Zoom? I didn't ask about whether this one was advertised. I asked what official business? I asked it last time. It was ignored. I have hundred, I have over a hundred emails that I don't get answered from you. So you make the FOIA requests have to happen. So you need to own this and quit trying to push it up because I, I'm going to air all mine and publicize all my emails to you that I don't get answered, that caused me to do FOIA request. So my objection is to this meeting and to the fact that what official action did you take to start going to Zoom? What was the cause to go to Zoom? What was the official action? And this is where the board has a chance, but the board doesn't know the sunshine law. And that's the problem. And you guys will listen and you will say, we don't have to respond. And then you guys are going to be the sunshine violation because I have an objection that needs to be aired. Your solicitor is here. Could the solicitor hear me?
Mr. Yuhas, I'm waiting for you to finish your four minutes because I'm, I don't want to play around with the clock.
Okay. So, so I want to be done.
Mr. Yuhas, you have 25 seconds.
Yep. I, I'm, I'm fine. I want to know what official was actually was taken to first move us back to Zoom and live.
Okay. So the second half of that question is not a proper sunshine act objection, period. So I'm not going to address it. The first half of it is again, also, I, my role is to tell you that your objection does not raise a legitimate sunshine act concern that this board has to address. And it does not. To give you an example, if there's bad weather or if for whatever reason, the board decides to move to a different venue, they do not first have to meet and vote to change the venue of the meeting. Meetings do have to be properly advertised, et cetera, which this one was. And that's why I answered your objection the way I did. This meeting was properly called, properly advertised and does comply with the sunshine act, including the fact that it's on Zoom.
Okay. Any other comments?
Your last person is Ms. Knight. You're unmuted. Sharon Knight, you can speak.
It's that, she's saying that her phone is still muted.
Can you try unmuting again?
It's showing unmuted on the actual screen now, Sharon. So is there a button on your phone that's muted?
Would you like to put your comment in the chat box?
Or alternatively, if she was, okay, yeah, you could do that. I was going to say otherwise, if you wanted to just call the phone number for the thing, if that would be quicker, easier for you.
Thank you, yellow. While we are waiting for Sharon Knight to speak, would you like to speak?
Does anybody have that number real handy for her to call in? I don't have that screen open and my computer will have a stroke if I try and open another window on here.
I'll get it, Holly.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Okay. Am I good now?
Yeah, Nick, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I just kind of want to echo a few things. I don't like being spoke for. Um, and I feel over the last couple of months, although we all know who I'm referring to, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go down that road. But I don't like being spoke for. And I've spoken to a lot of people in this community and there's more people that support this board. Job that you're doing or trying to do in such unprecedented times and the job that Heather's done. Now, I don't agree with everything, but overall I commend you for the work that you've tried to do, putting us through these uncharted waters. We've got the kids back in school and it's not. I don't have any dogs, I promise.
Nope, that would be mine.
Okay.
A squirrel.
All right. Nope, I don't have any dogs. But, um, anyway, there are more people that support the board. I think everyone seems to forget, although you're elected, you're volunteers. I don't think that you deserve the, uh, attitude that has been represented in a, a lot of the meetings that I've been to at the school board, whether online or in person. And I'm, I'm certainly embarrassed for our community, the way some of those meetings, uh, and the adults handled themselves. I don't think we are sending the right message to our children, nor are we setting. right message to our children, nor are we setting a good precedence. I certainly would rather keep this venue if it will contain the attitude that has been represented. So just from my standpoint, I appreciate everything that you're doing. And like I said, it's not, we're not the minority, I think. I think we're the majority that feel this way. And I certainly resent the money that's going to be wasted. And thank you. I appreciate your time.
I would just like to make a comment, kind of echoing what Holly said earlier. Mr. Iello, just so that you are aware, Lori Bennett, the board member, is not resigning, and I am not going anywhere.
Thanks, Mr. Iello. Thanks, Lori. Do we, are you sure, Sharon? I mean, we don't mind waiting a couple minutes. Because despite what has been said out there, the idea of moving this was not to stifle any kind of community involvement. As a matter of fact, we were in Zoom meetings for, I want to say, at least half of 2020. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but we experienced far more public participation in this setting than we did at most school board meetings. Yes, that one on September 9th had a high attendance rate of people in the room. However, we have many, many meetings where it is Bob Baker and Missy Bonis, and, you know, maybe CJ, there to hear all of the wisdom that we have to impart. So if there are glitches that we need to work through, we can do that. Because it is not, this is not intended to stifle anybody's involvement. I didn't see if Sharon responded after that. Okay, all right. Sharon says she will talk next time. Was there anybody else? Speak now, forever, hold your peace, until next week.
Are there any more community requests, Holly?
I don't believe so.
Then I'd like to say something, if I may.
Sure.
So this is our community, as I said, and I want to set the record straight, and I want to just correct it for the community. I believe Mr. Yuhas said that we do not respond to his hundreds of emails. And I want to set the record straight, that I know George, and I've had several phone conversations with George. We have answered his emails. Because it's a group email, we cannot banter back and forth, give our opinions. Basically, the emails are, thank you for your information. I got your email. So I just want to correct that for the community, that there has been discussions one on one between myself and George. I listened to him. George is not in my region, but I, I work with George with sports over the years. So no one is stifling George, at least myself. I'm listening and I'm trying to understand. But I want to be clear for the community that we do respond to the emails that we get, like, thank you for your input. But we can't go back and forth with any discussion, because it's a group of school board members. I think that has to be clear. That's all.
Yeah, I would add to that, the fact that not every email, not every claim, you know, something very, you know, big lately, not just locally, not with any one person. You know, everybody is in armchair scholar on legal advisement right now. And we are in some uncharted territories, and everything is an opinion or an interpretation of a law or an understanding. And what somebody views or has talked to a lawyer and views as that is going to be different from other people who are versed in that law as well. So not every email requires a response. I am not interested in, you know, continually debating and going back and forth. Sometimes I know it seems like I just like to hear myself talk, but I swear that's not the case. So yeah, I believe that we respond when it is pertinent and our response is needed. But that is certainly not every single point of contact.
And then the other thing to build on that is if it's a specific request, that's a student related request, you know, we get emails sometimes around, you know, parents frustrated with an administrator or a policy. You know, I personally read every email that I get. Some I respond to directly, but I always make sure that that at least gets responded to through some avenue. And so maybe there's some that have slipped through the cracks, but if it's a, you know, student related issue in the high school, then I refer that to Heather and to Todd. If it's a, you know, a school related issue at the primary center, then it goes to Summer and Heather. And so I'm not an expert on every issue that happens in the district. So, you know, as board members, we need the people who are doing that work to be able to respond to some of those. So if you don't get a response from me, it's clearly not that I don't care. But I just, I can't, I don't know the background on student related issues. So those get referred directly to either the building administrators, principals, or Heather directly. But we hear what the public has to say. We respond to those as quickly as we can. And so that's all I'll add. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you for all your participation and for being pretty respectful for the most part about it.
I don't. Thank you.
Good night.